Thanks for coming to see your city council. We're gonna call to order here. Uh, we have, we have no counselors online. Is that correct, Abigail? Thanks. First thing we're gonna do is silence our cell phones. For tonight's land acknowledgement, I was at May Street School this week and I was admiring their giant mural on the wall, which had the names of several of the geographic features in our community. And I thought we'd all learn a little language lesson tonight. We have Waiest and Pato and Lewitt and Nchiwana and Wakoma. And I'm glad we're all able to be here together. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Okay, I've got some folks signed up about ceasefire and about hotels. And then the sheriff. Okay, so we're gonna take the business from the audience on, on the topics. So if you have the agenda with you, you'll know when you're, when you're gonna be speaking. So the first thing we have, unless we have some additions, Abigail?
We do not.
Great. We'll, we'll, we'll hear about the crisis resolution share center from, from the, from the sheriff. Push, push the edge of the disc, will you, Sheriff, to make it green? There we go. Tech, tech, tech.
Okay. You're asking me to do technology thing. That does not go in the paper. Okay, we're clear. Him and I, we, we have an understanding now and we'll make sure that guy back in the black stays out of it. But anyways, thanks for having me. I appreciate it. And just I wanted to give everybody an update on the resolution center and the progress or lack thereof that we've made. This is somewhat of a bittersweet conversation that I come to you with tonight. Um, for those of you that aren't aware of it, um, I know that there's some new faces and stuff here. We've had some conversations about it. But, um, originally when we first got the project started, of course, it's a Hood River, Wasco, Sherman County Regional Project. We received the $4.6 million for lottery funding. And then we partnered with an organization called Columbia Care out of Southern Oregon. Um, and unfortunately, and they had acquired $9.3 million in grant money is out of the original hundred million, 125 million dollar grant fund through Oregon Health Authority. Unfortunately, on August 3rd of 2023, they withdrew from the project. Um, needless to say, we began to scramble for those funds to see if we could get those that reallocated, moved over to Wasco County because Wasco can't be building the facility. And unfortunately, due to legal reasons, Oregon Health Authority couldn't do that. They took the money back and put it back in that fund. So that led us to the next series of conversations of where we were at, how we were gonna try to, you know, keep the funding stream going. This is, of course, before our short session that I'll talk about here in just a minute. The, uh, when we met with the Oregon Health Authority on November 6th of 2023, just two weeks after the meeting that they told us they couldn't, didn't think they could do the 9.3 million. They'd said, yeah, we can't do the 9.3 million. However, we're gonna direct, we want a direct fund to the project. With maybe that, with that same amount of money, including maybe some extra dollars on top of that, which was pretty exciting to us. So we began to go through the process of the short session and begin to gear up on that. In the meantime, what we did is we reallocated, we redesigned, kind of reinvented ourselves and the project itself. So if you remember right, it was gonna be a residential treatment facility, secure residential treatment facility, then walk-in crisis. But when we started looking at the data between Hood River, Wasco and Sherman County, as well as the region. And when I say the region, I kind of include, why I do include Jefferson County in that, as well as Morrow County and a little bit of Yumitala County. We looked at it from the standpoint of what is, has, has our needs changed? And we did determine they had changed under what we call substance use disorder. You've heard me talk about that dual diagnosis where you have individuals that have drug and alcohol addiction, which causes mental and behavioral health issues or vice versa. Um, and that dual diagnosis co-occurring substance use disorder world that we're in was really took it, had taken a top priority. So looking at that and kind of reinventing ourselves based on current data and updated data, we decided we're gonna go, we're gonna go and we're gonna go for every bit of it. And we're gonna add S U D into this conversation. So with the new model, it's on the 7.3 acres in the Dalles. It's a full-blown campus. So it includes a 16-bed residential treatment facility now, um, substance use treatment facility, residential treatment facility for mental behavioral, substitute disorder, or I mean, uh, secure residential treatment facility. And then a walk-in crisis center was added back into that. And then what we decided to do is move all of mobile crisis for McClemmy's Center for Living, which serves Hood River County as well. Move that into there. So we'd have everything on one campus. And then we'd still have enough room to put a class one facility in with Adventist Health and stuff like that, like we've talked about in the past. Fifty, $50.3 million to, to do this. Um, which we figured, you know what, what the heck, we might as well try it for the simple fact that we've already got the, we already had the 9.3 million coming. We had the, we had the 4.6. And then if we could get anything out of this legislative section, which was 36 million, and I didn't expect the 36 million, nobody would have. But you know what? If we can skin that cat four ways this Sunday, let's see what we can get out of the Oregon Legislature. Well, fortunately, from your support from Hood River, as well as our legislators and everything like that, on those organizational letters that we sent out, we garnered eight million out of the short session. And that's, you know, I'm not, that's great, you know? It was way short of what we had anticipated or what we wanted. But it was a, it was a step in the right direction. And in some ways, it was a blessing in disguise because it gives us the ability to phase this thing. And instead of putting a $50 million project together and contractors and all that sort of stuff, it's a great big thing. So let's just take one bite at a time. There's four pieces of this from a budgetary standpoint, when you look at the pie. And I won't get into all the details that way because it'll, it'd take too much time. But so when you add the eight million and the 4.6 and the 9.3, Oregon Health Authority was gonna kick back in. That basically got two of our four phases done. We withdrew the SRTF off the project thing because, um, thankfully, we have a great director at the Clemmie Center for Living, Al Barton. He said, Sheriff, we don't want to go down the path of an SRTF. And that was one of the main things that public safety really focused on because it gives us the ability, if somebody's on a police officer hold or a director's hold, we can take them there for security purposes. That's that subacute, yes, ma'am.
Can you say what the acronym stands for?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm FBI versus CIA and the SRTF. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm, I talk in acronym. Yeah. SRTF is Secure Residential Treatment Facility. Yeah. RTF is Residential Treatment Facility. And remember, we talked about class one, two, three, all the way down in, in the state of Oregon. So when we, when our director basically said, you know, Sheriff, we don't think we want to go down this path of an SRTF right now. And I said, well, why is that? Because law enforcement, we really need to have someplace where we can have these individuals at where it's secure. And he said, currently, right now, under the current climate in Oregon, he says, I would strongly recommend that we don't go down that path for the simple fact that if we do build it and we hardly can even get the doors open, the state will step in and they'll plug it and we won't get to use it and we're gonna be stuck with it. I'm like, good advice. So we've done some reshifting around. So it's S U D. And walk-in crisis right now is what we're tentatively looking at for first phases one and two. And then S R, or sorry, walk-in crisis, crisis, mobile crisis response team, jail diversion, all that sort of stuff in those first two phases. Um, and then the last two phases will be residential treatment facility and secure residential treatment facility. Because if you really think about it, individuals that are under the S U D world, the dual diagnosis and stuff that we talk about, those are really our individuals that are in crisis in our communities. If you think of somebody here in the city of Hood River that has a drug and alcohol addiction that's spilling over into, into behavior health or mental health issues, they're technically, if you really think about it, they're in crisis. So if we can stagger that out and move that in as our first phase, that's probably the best thing that we can do right now. Here's the bad news. And the last two weeks have been probably the most stressful of my. And the last two weeks have been probably the most stressful of my tenure as sheriff is it sounds to me like the Oregon Health Authority is gonna back out of the nine point three million. Um, we have a letter drafted right now to go to the director of the Oregon, Oregon, um, Health Authority, as well as the, the individual that's in charge of the, um, Behavior Health Unit or Behavior Health Director of Oregon Health Authority. Um, we have sent them one letter already. Um, they have not responded to me. They did send a preliminary letter back to, um, Al Barton at the McClemmy Center for Living, our director there. They had a meeting last week with Commissioner Kramer. And they basically said, you're gonna have to fill this, this, this form out, which we've done, by the way, three times. Which is, I did not go, probably wise that I wasn't in attendance, but because it's so frustrating. But the other part that's really frustrating about this is, is that, is that that money that was allocated for this, the, the hundred million dollar pot, it's gone. There's no money left out of that pot of money, which I find somewhat ironic when I look at the numbers from House Bill five zero two four. And if you want to talk politics, you can look up Oregon twenty twenty-one, House Bill five two zero four. There's almost twenty-eight billion dollars allocated out of the twenty-one long session of the legislature, and nobody can account for that money. So they're squabbling a little bit about our measly thirty-six million out of a twenty-eight million dollar project, product, or, uh, but anyways, I'll digress on that. So where are we at now? Suffice to say that the Columbia Gorge Resolution Center Advisory Council, which I'm co-chair of, has already stepped up to the plate and we're prepared to engage in this letter. Matter of fact, my name is on this letter, Al Barton's name is on the letter, Commissioner Kramer's letter's name is on the letter. And it basically calls the Oregon Health Authority out to fund it at the minimum at the nine point three million, you know, and follow through with their work. Granted, we didn't get anything in writing in October or in November, but the reality of it is, is they need to follow through with their, with their, on their end. They need to give us a nine point three million. That's, that's the way it is. They need to give a total accounting of that, and that's what this letter documents. We have not sent the letter yet, because there is a contact that Commissioner Kramer has somewhere down in the whole political world. And for those of you that sit here, as well as those of you in the gallery, you know, I am not a politician. So that's his job. You don't want me down there, because I'll just tell people the way it is and how, what needs to be fixed, because that's what we need to do. But he's down there talking to them. And we will know sometime, I hope by tomorrow, as to whether things are gonna start moving again and the logjam has been busted. If it hasn't been, then the letter will get sent. It will not only go to the director of the Oregon Health Authority, but I'm sure it will end up in the governor's desk, the governor's behavior health specialist, um, czar, if you want to say that. Um, and the other ninety legislatures, as well as organizations like you, will be able to see that letter that's been sent to them. Because they haven't followed through with, or so far, they have not followed through. So that's kind of where we're at with it. It's kind of a, like I was telling Abigail, this is kind of a bittersweet conversation that I wanted to have with you. But you're one of our biggest supporters. And I don't say that to be politically correct or anything like that. You guys have been behind us the entire way. But I think it's fair for you to understand where we're at in the project and how, how this thing is kind of materializing. Um, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a crapshoot right now for the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours. I, I, I don't have any, I don't, I have good news, but I don't have real good news. You know what I'm saying? So I'm more than happy to entertain questions from the gallery or the, or US Council members, or, you know, anyone who gets to get, yeah.
Thanks so much.
Yeah. So anybody?
Thank you for being here. Did, were there any reasons given as to why that funding is no longer available from the Oregon Health Authority?
None.
Right. Um, are there any other funding mechanisms besides Oregon Health Authority dollars that were coming through?
So...
Advisory panel, anything along those lines?
Yeah, so we did research on grants and stuff. We've been doing that for, ever since we started this project. And there's not really a lot of stuff out there, because it's all health oriented. Oregon Health Authority is really, they kind of hold the keys to the kingdom. Um, there is specific dollars that are allocated for these types of projects through the Oregon Health Authority that are very, very specific, like what we learned in the long session where the eight million dollars came from. What we're being told is there's another, potentially another sixty-five million dollar pot of money that these dollars can be allocated out of. But we haven't got any confirmation of that. So we're not exactly sure. But as of right now, the Oregon Health Authority is really the ones that, that are the, like I said, they have the keys to the financial kingdom when it comes to that. So.
Yep. Are there any other representatives that are involved, such as, you know, Senator Merkley, Senator Wyden, any sort of congressional funding that can?
Yeah, so actually, what we did is we made a request to Merkley and Wyden's office, um, three weeks ago, Wasco County did. Um, and it was a multi-ask, and we did ask for, uh, four million dollars for the project as well. But we, we don't know if we're gonna get that or not. We're not actually banking on that. It's just, there's a request along with five other funding requests from that office back in Washington DC. Yeah, we'd be hopeful to get it, but like Commissioner Kramer and I have talked about, one of the things that we have to take into consideration is it's Washington DC. And so things work really, really slow back there. So right now, we're not counting on it. We have the ask, but we're just, we're not even thinking about that right now at this time. So, but, but there, those conversations have happened.
Well, I appreciate your time and your efforts. I know that this has been a long time in the happening. Uh, if there's anything that this council can do to support these efforts, please let us know.
Yep, just keep writing the letters, I think. So, begging, did you have a?
Um, yeah, two questions with the, um, Oregon Health Authority staff. Have you guys been engaging with Nate Steis or, you know, local rep with the governor's office?
That's how this last thing came up here today was with, through Mr. Steis and another contact down at the governor's office and through OHA. So that's why we suspended our sending, hitting the send button on.
Oh, sure. I'm, I'm just, yeah.
I'm ready to go like this, to be honest.
Coordination is good. Um, and then actually following up, I'm glad I said, I'm gonna specifically say, is there something that you can do in the next couple days or in the next few weeks to help from our end?
Yeah, I think for right now, let's see how this plays out either today or tomorrow with, with Mr. Steis, as well as the governor's office and stuff like that. I think probably that will tell us where we're at when we send this letter and then what kind of response we get, get back from that letter. Um, I'm hoping that we'll get a positive response of some level of engagement on this conversation. If we don't, probably what's gonna happen is, is we're gonna collectively come to you as an advisory council, and we're probably gonna pull the trigger on everybody that we can. So I have rural, have the rural organization project on the line. I'll have you, I'll have all of our organizations ready to submit, probably another letter saying, hey, it'll be much more, it'll be more aggressive. Let's just put it that way. So I think right now, let's hold. I'm, I want to follow the process, so, and I, I appreciate the people that are out front on this thing, because I'm one of these people that just get it done. I know what it takes. Let's just get it done. But they, there's this process that we need to go through. So let's do that, counselor, and then we'll go from there, okay?
Okay, great. Well, thank you for working on this and appreciate you.
Yep, you're very welcome. And my phone's always turned on. You guys know how to get ahold of me, so, and Abigail especially, so, yeah. Anything else?
Thanks, good show.
Good enough. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Next, we have the fee waiver for Juneteenth. Anne, are you here?
Yeah. Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm Anne Harris. I'm with OSU Stention, and I am one of the coordinators of the Black in the Gorge Group. Black in the Gorge has been in existence now for about two and a half years. And, um, maybe some of you are, know that we had our first annual Juneteenth celebration last year. Thank you for your support last year for that event. And we are planning actively for our second annual Gorge Juneteenth celebration to happen either Saturday the fifteenth or June, uh, Sunday the sixteenth of June, where tomorrow, our planning committee will, um, make that decision. We're kind of trying to work with a few other events happening and make sure as many people as possible can attend. So we're requesting a waiver again this year. Um, last year's event was quite successful, even though it turned out to be an extremely cold day in June. Um, we had probably about two hundred people come. Uh, we had a band, we had African dance lessons, we had a community art project, which everyone participated in, creating a, a community quilt, a freedom quilt. And people added their, their, um, comments, and that quilt will be unveiled at this upcoming Juneteenth. Um, we hope to do another community art project, um, this coming year. And, um, we had lots of community partners that were there with tables with information about their organizations. And, but what we really called upon them to do was have, um, kid-friendly and family-friendly activities at each of their tables, so that people went around to the different tables of the library, the history museum, the orchestra association, um, the, um, Pride Alliance, the, uh, uh, next door. And lots of folks were there with tables, and we, um, are calling upon those groups again to help support our event. We're gonna go a little lower key and have a DJ instead of a big band. We, we, we went big on the first year to kind of kick us, kick ourselves off there. But, um, we want to keep that a little bit more local, so hiring probably a local DJ and seeing what, uh, we're also hoping to encourage more community participation in offering poetry or people bringing their own music that they may wish to share or their own storytelling. So it's getting out there, and, um, we are hopeful, again, that the city will support us with the fees for the park. And I think you have a specific number there. Um, there's a couple of other fees there for permits and hanging the banner and those kinds of things. And, um, so just happy to be able to be putting, um, this together again and have a great group. Um, yesterday, a group of the families and, um, some of the adults, uh, of the group went over to Portland, to the Art Museum, to the, um, um, Black Artists of Oregon exhibit. And so we're doing things and we're bringing people together across generations. And, and we're also looking for ways to be in our community and, and share. So, um, thank you for hearing my request. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Hi, you, hi, you.
Oh, yes.
Uh, I guess a comment. Um, one, appreciate all your efforts in, in making this happen. Year number two, year number two, how exciting. Do you see a role for this council to participate more actively in Juneteenth as opposed to just potentially waiving a B?
Well, I've asked the mayor to come and, uh, address the group. And I would welcome what, in what way you might like to participate. I, I kind of, I don't know what all you all do. Um, but if you'd like to participate, you would be more than welcome. And, because we really want it to be a community event.
No motion?
Thank you.
I move to wave City Pito like three hundred and thirty. Or it's associated with the Juneteenth event at Jackson Park.
I second.
Second by Rivera, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Thanks, Hannah. Next, we have the consent agenda, the meeting minutes from last uh, last meeting.
I will reaffirm the consent agenda.
Do by Saunders.
Second.
Second by Paulson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Both? Chair votes, I motion passes. Thank you. Budget Committee, Chris.
Thank you. So uh, City Budget Committee uh is organizing. Um, it is composed of City Council and then equal number uh of elector members appointed by the City Council. So uh, the Budget Committee went into this uh, this year with four vacancies. Uh, we received two applications and we looked to appoint uh two previous Budget Committee members. Um, so Tina McNer- McNerney, McNurthney, sorry, and who is here?
Hey, Tina McNurthney.
Nerthney.
Everybody gets.
I'm sorry. I said, I should do the practice. That thing's long and edgy. No one ever gets that. So I don't have an excuse. Um, so Tina currently serves as the Investor Services Manager at Urban Development Partners. Um, she brings relevant professional and volunteer experience to the committee and a desire for greater involvement in the River community. Um, Brandon Cammer uh is a local private practice attorney and resident. Um, as both a home and small business owner in the community, uh, he brings experience that would be valuable to the process and would like to be involved in assisting in the city budget process. Um, uh, Graham Berg and Todd Abel are uh current Budget Committee members interested in serving another term. Um, so appointment of uh the two new members and the two uh renewing members uh would complete the elector membership of the Budget Council and we would be complete. Um, so uh, it is the staff recommendation that we accept the new applicants, reappoint uh Todd and and Graham um to complete the budget.
Super. Thank you. Thank you all for stepping up and work. Great. Appreciate you.
Leadership is done by those who show up to a large extent and these high paying kinds of jobs especially really appreciate your your generosity. Look forward to end of April coming, things coming along. So uh, I think we should make a motion. Is that how it is now? Please.
Did, and I may be mixing this up with a different committee. Did we have uh like interviews with folks? Or was that something?
There were no, so uh, because uh we had exactly as many applicants as vacancies. Um, and then exactly as many individuals that wanted to renew, they completed the Budget Committee and so we didn't need to go through interviews.
Well, then I will move to appoint Tina McNurthney. Sorry, uh, Brandon Cammer for appointment to the Budget Committee and reappoint Graham Berg and Todd Abel to an additional term.
Move by Saunders.
Second.
Second by Steppina, discussion.
I look forward to our volunteers chairing this thing so I don't have to for the however many years that's been in a row that I've had to do that. So please come prepared public. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Post? Chair votes, I motion passes. Thanks again, y'all. Jackie, we have the proposed art mural ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Um, so we are continuing the conversation on murals. And um, so back in November of last year of twenty twenty-three, I presented our stakeholder um input on murals and received some feedback from you guys on what you would like to see in a mural code. And then we came back in February with a draft um, draft code language. And we had some more discussion on what are some of the things that um you wanted to see in there. And so uh, now we've come back with um the, an ordinance for you to take a look at. Uh, at the end of the discussion last time back in February, um, we were directed to move forward with a draft language that um a allowed murals in the historic district, um, but prohibited them on historic structures in the historic district and along um Oak Street with a seventy-five foot buffer. So we included that language, but because this was um really a contentious point for council uh in discussing, discussing it. We also can included a second option. Um, so it's already all there in the language, which would completely um, which would prohibit murals in the historic district. Because those were the two points that we felt like had the most discussion and the most conflict. And so this way, um, you guys are able to look at the two options again, um deliberate and then uh give a recommendation as to which option you would like to move forward with um so that we can come back for a first reading.
Thank you, Jackie. Um, as, as you all know, we've, we've been here before. Um, it seemed like our discussion last time didn't quite come to clarity about which, which option had, 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 had a majority. Um, this is a juicy, tempting topic to talk about at great length. I'm hop- hoping we can move expeditiously through. Um, I would encourage folks to, if you have questions or wondering, uh, I, I hope we will not have uh endless advocacy and debate among each other about why sixteen feet is better than fourteen feet or et cetera, et cetera. It can take as much time as we do. So, would anybody like to ask any clarifying questions to start? The most expeditious would be for somebody to move option one or two um and and move ahead. My fear is that we sort of spent most of our time so far discussing this, coming to an impasse on whether historic or no historic. Uh, there's other parts of this that are important. And uh, as I said on the radio this morning, just because, just as we could end up with a giant, let's say, gummy mural on Pietro's Pizza, we could also end up with something that none of us love and then it's there until the paint weathers off. Because it's like, it's like getting a tattoo. There it is. So um, there, there's benefits to murals, uh, art, free expression. There's, you can't legislate your neighbor's tastes. I mean, this is a and 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 anyone in this room and we could argue and discuss for as long as we'd be willing. So uh, I would encourage us to try to get this, get this decided. Uh, Dan, do you have anything to add before we?
I don't, um, other than your, your admonition that this is like a miniature constitutional law discussion. So everyone loves to to launch into it, but I think the two options are well framed in the proposal before you. So if you discuss, make a motion, be clear about uh what, how you want these, this section to read.
Great. Alright, here we go.
Great.
Sorry. Mayor.
So um, I guess bigger question for this. Did you want some resolution on the specific historic or nonhistoric thing now? Because there's a bunch of stuff um, you guys never got to in the last um confrontation about this that I don't think I was at about just the general code for everywhere that I have a ton of comments on and do you want to dive into that or how do you want to frame this?
It would help me, Megan. I don't know about others, but uh, could you not? Could you sort of list the question, not like ask all the questions, but could you give us a subject lineup of each of the topics you have a question about?
Yeah, um, so big picture, when we first talked about this in the hall, um, there had been a bunch of recommendations from the two different, the stakeholder group and landmarks, um, about a bunch of parts of the code. And we had talked about some of the specific ones, you know, the height and everything that were pulled out, but I also, I had left that understanding that we basically give a direction to say, yeah, all of the recommendations move forward with it. And then I'm not seeing how actually it's in the code of things like it's not allowed in the residential zone. Um, the code is says all structures, not just retaining walls. Um, doesn't have any clarity about retaining laws in the right of way versus private property. Um, doesn't say anything about not having it um face the front street and only being only size side streets. Um, the rules about not being reflective and having no lighting or being unpainted brick are only for the historic area and not for all things, even though that was a recommendation for everything. Not having it face residential areas, having no movement, not covering windows, also just in the historic rules, not for everything. And then there was things about limiting size, percent cover and height that I think we've a little bit talked about, but not with super clarity. So. Um, and and separately, not something we talked about in the hall, but there's something about it can't extend more than six inches from the wall, which seems like a very large extension. So that's a personal we haven't discussed, but I would like to discuss that as well.
Great. Thank you so much. That's very helpful that I thought I don't uh innumerous it as like in addition to historic district, nonhistoric district, like those are important considerations that, again, you said the landmarks weighed in on that, right?
Um, some of them are landmarks. A bunch of them were the non-landmarks stakeholder group of other experts for just general rules. And there was, that was, most of those are from that. And I, I thought we had kind of given and maybe the direction of, yeah, we want to follow those recommendations.
And the current, both options are kind of mute on those, aren't they?
Correct.
Yeah.
Grant? Sure. Uh, uh, in my, in my reading, I understand my understanding is a lot of those considerations are incorporated under the design standards, section C. Um, qualifying surfaces for murals, uh, murals are not allowed, so an unpainted brick. Um, that I, I think a lot of those were incorporated?
Um, specifically just for a historic district, not for throughout the city. Okay. And a number of them. So that does have a bunch of them and then there's some that aren't anywhere. Yeah.
Let's see if we can come to a, a majority on the historic yea or nay question, which is, which is what option one and two are getting at? Would anybody be willing to uh propose one or zero and see how many votes it gets?
I'll propose yea in the historic district.
Option one.
Option one? So to be clear, would allow murals in the downtown historic district with the limits described in option one. Okay, that's what we're talking about?
Yeah, so like, you know, just as uh Jackie had said, allowed within the historic district, but with the limits of option one being not on Oak Street, not on qualifying historic structures, et cetera. Good option.
We have that motion by Counselor Steppina. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Paulson. Uh, any questions or do people understand what we're asking and are ready to answer that or any, any deliberation before we vote on this?
I want to bring up one additional question that I still don't feel has been addressed. And I know we reviewed a list around non-contributing buildings. During the time that those buildings were added to that list, there were buildings on there that weren't a hundred years old during the time of this study. And so how many of those buildings are we aware of that are not on the list? And I feel like that's something we haven't discussed.
Does anybody know this?
So my understanding is that those designated historical buildings go through a whole state permitting process. Um, so as far as I'm aware of, how many buildings could qualify now if we were to go through that process? Again, I don't have an answer for you on that. Um, I don't know that we have that inventory offhand, but um, yeah, it's not just like, are they this amount old? They still have to go through the whole state review process. Dan, is that correct?
Right. It's a designation process and specific building structures have to be nominated. And the nomination form is, it's like a giant term paper that documents its historic significance. So even there, they're old things. They may not be designated historic structures. And the same thing with a historic district. It has to be nominated and accepted and and that gives it the designation and historic districts consist of contributing structures and non-contributing structures. So some of the old things um would be presumably non-contributing. Uh, unless they are, you know, been designated as contributing in the, the listing.
That helps, guys?
Can that process happen if we were to pass option one? Can that happen simultaneously?
What, the designation process?
Yeah, the designation process, updating a non-contributing building list. Can that happen even if we pass option one?
So if you pass option one, does uh, does that foreclose some of these structures from being designated or districts being established?
Yeah.
I don't think it would affect that. Um, that, yeah, I don't think that would necessarily affect that. That goes to the historic criteria and the, you know, the nomination process and those sorts of things. And uh, if there happens to be a basically a temporary mural on the structure, I don't think that would disqualify it from being designated a historic structure.
I, I think I'm asking the same question in a different way. Making sure that the code does not, i- if, if a building gets added to one of these lists, it, it then becomes excluded um without having to go back and change the code. So that the code is pointing to a list of historic buildings and, and which is live, right? I mean, so it can be just updated over time. And then if there isn't a mural on that building and it becomes historic, it is now uh excluded from mural-olness.
Right. It's not eligible for getting a mural at that point.
And that's true, right? That the code says, look at whatever the current list is.
At the time, a mural permit is issued.
Right.
Yes, it's a snapshot in time.
Cool, thanks.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt and this might not be the right time for it, but I did want to check with you and see if there were any public comments that uh, folks signed up for on this topic and and whenever you choose to have them, just before, before a vote, it's gonna be.
See this little tiny list and see all these robust people. So I'm gonna hand this back to the table. If you would, would like to speak to us tonight, please sign up. Next request? Did anyone come and speak about murals tonight? Thank you. I'll get rid of this reminder. Great. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Are we ready to vote? We're gonna do a hand, hand vote, so I really have to get this to go. I want to be able to count. So uh, all in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four. Okay. All opposed? Chair votes nay, motion passes. So uh, I think we said in concept, we liked the option one. Uh, decision about the historic district. What about the laundry list that Megan gave us? Are you guys good with? Grant thought that perhaps were included. Megan thought perhaps they weren't. Those are all also important questions. I don't think they're gonna take as long as this one we just answered, correct? Um, and thoughts on how y'all would like to proceed with that? Should we try to do some of those now?
Yeah, I don't think it's there that we move forward if one of our peers still has questions around you know, specifics and it should be really clear.
Great. Let's start with your request and see if we can, any or all, not or, let's go.
And that's based on the original recommendations, right, your list? So we have a copy of those original recommendations handy perhaps or, because I, I have the same understanding as you is we, we agreed with the, we didn't, we didn't say not this, right? So
I want to understand what you're saying. Those were recommendations coming out of the volunteer committees. Do you believe that they were in the original ordinance also or that they?
No, in our original discussion. As Megan has rightly pointed out.
So you're still asking, hey, do we have seven copies of that? Is that your?
I'm just wondering if there's a more efficient way since we've already discussed it and rather than piecemeal, I think, you know, the understanding was we, we genuinely agreed with the recommendations and we were just debating um, not fit form function, but debating whether or not to allow them.
Uh, so a way would be to come back with the, as the, the agenda says, clean resolution. Um, so we decided on the option one, option two question. Let's get all that stuff in the resolution and then bring it back for, for next time and we'll, we'll talk about that. Does that sound okay? I don't think we're gonna be able to produce a really good.
Um, if I could ask for, just, so um, just to clarify, so a lot of these um, restrictions that were in the design standards do encompass a lot of what was discussed. So if we just opened that up to all of the murals as opposed to just in the historic district, um, that would resolve a lot of those restrictions. Um, and then adding in no murals in uh residential areas was the other one. And then my understanding per the discussion on percentage of walls was that um, the advice we received was to go for a general height restriction um all around. So if that has changed from direction from council, um, I think we should clarify what those restrictions should be.
Grant?
If nothing about this, we already moved uh and voted on this clean line option one.
Yep.
Uh, if anyone has any questions about what was discussed and any question beyond this, I don't think we should be taking time here and now. There are always questions, questions, thank you. That's something that we can't leave offline for uh, in, in not right now.
Thank you. That'll do.
Um, I don't know if this will be helpful, but I just pulled up the minutes from that meeting, November twenty-seventh. Uh, it says elder summarized council's direction and feedback time, a minimum of two years for a mural. Manner, the material should be paint or tile, no neon colors or reflective materials. Size should be limited to fifteen feet in height, no coverage on windows or doors. Council agreed to include language stating building owners cannot be compensated for the mural. So I think we got clear direction at that time, uh, and that was for all areas.
So that hasn't been incorporated correctly in here, but I also, and maybe this wasn't captured in the minutes and Doug and I misunderstood, but I also thought and it wasn't a large conversation because it was just kind of head and eyes of, yeah, the rest of the recommendations we didn't discuss in any detail, but we were on board for it. And that's the other part that's missing. But also everything you just listed is just currently under historic district, not for citywide.
Alright, I I think the cleanest thing for us to do is work with your city attorney to bring back clean language and put this on another agenda.
Yes, I think so. Is everybody okay with that?
Is there any other direction or comments you want to give us before we end this topic today?
I'm interested in the main six inch thing. A little bit more about that.
Uh, so page thirty-eight of the packet, let me find it in my own soap. Um, so, let's see, the top, the first C on that page, the mural shall not extend more than six inches from the plane of the building surface. Um, and I don't know what the right number is, but six inches is pretty big uh, and feels like not what we would generally want in our right of ways. So I would suggest one to two inches max.
I would like to know landmarks gave that questions and thought.
So I reviewed all of the notes to come up with my crazy list here. Uh, but it was all of the notes we've gotten from Jackie from all of the meetings of the different stakeholder groups. Um, and nothing about extension from the wall was ever discussed in any of those as far as the notes implied. So this seems to be a new thing that I'm not sure where it came from.
I, I, if I'm remembering correctly, Ryan, you, I recall reading something about there being an extension from the building creating up a surface for some sort of similar thing that was extended from the building. Uh, I don't remember exactly if it was six inches or however many inches it was, but I vaguely remember that being something that was in uh the materials that we reviewed in discussing this. If I guess I would be mistaken, but I think it's in there if I'm remembering correctly.
Okay.
Uh, you know, comparing, like competing memories here, but I think uh when uh you directed just to have paint or tile be the only materials, I think that made the question of how far it would extend uh fairly moot. So that might be why it didn't get included.
Well, I guess so to, to the main point of whether it was discussed or not, I think six inches of those two are from the wall. And on a personal note.
And this current version says five and a half inches is okay and you don't like that?
Correct.
So you would have said one and two?
I mean, I have no concept of how to decide, but in my mind, one inch seems more than enough.
Can you bring us back to the version that says one inch, please? Grant?
Just reminding you that we have already discussed this and passed option one. If we wish to go back and change that, we should have talked about that before voting on option one.
Okay, so leave it at six and we can bring it up next time. That open one, people?
Some of the motion was just we were going forward with option one of those, of that one slide, not we had passed this language as a whole.
I agree with that, but we're the two who voted yes.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with, with both of y'all, but I thought we were deciding on historic or not. Historic or not. Not, not the ordinance as written.
And there's ample time to fix it. We're not, we didn't approve an ordinance tonight. We just uh, so you'll bring it back with the yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Jackie, well done. Thank you.
Okay, how'd my sheet do? Did it get well populated? Can, Matty, could you bring me my sheet, please? Thank you. So uh, just gonna remind us all that this body does not meet except like this. So we haven't talked about this as the six of us, because we're not allowed to and we didn't. Um, I'm really eager to have the discussion with my colleagues. I understand that people have come and really want to talk to us. I'm gonna be less excited about people who tell us what they've already told us. So if you could, uh, we're gonna start with John Herman, followed by Locke. Nope, he's on hotels. Uh, John, followed by Ben. You touched the edge there, John. Great, thank you.
And we have a new timer technology. Jen, how you doing?
Hamilton Avenue.
Great.
Thank you. All right, John Heron, thirty-two Hamilton Avenue, Underwood, Washington. Uh, used to be on this council and City Planning Commission as well, here to talk about the proposed uh ceasefire uh resolution that you're uh discussing. By the way, I understand in, in section three or item three of that, uh, the purpose of the uh, resolution is to direct Oregon Representatives Federal to also uh immediately request a ceasefire in the violence. The one issue that I have with that is there's no mention about the release of the hostages, whatever, whatsoever in that. And if you've been following current events within the last week, the US did put forth a resolution to the UN asking for an immediate ceasefire and the release of the hostages. What's interesting, that resolution was vetoed and shot down by China and Russia. So that's important to note. I think the important thing is we should really understand what is at stake for Israel. The state of Israel's been under constant pressure for decades. And that's for the Jewish community for centuries. From all outside sources. Kind of put it in local context, think of your neighbor. Who has for years said, I want you eradicated. I want you off the face of the earth. I want you out of this town. That is what the Jewish state and state of Israel has been facing for years. Um, and what's interesting is that neighbor of yours. Twenty percent of his families chose to live with the ones he wants to eradicate. Because they know. What freedom is like. They know what it's like to be able to practice their religion, whatever it might be. Safe and free. Um. And then, you know. That neighbor also instigates to all the community around him. That yes, you should join me in hating this group of people. This family that lives in this house. They shouldn't be here. And that goes on for dead days. And then, you know, finally, he says, well, I'm just gonna start shooting at the house randomly. Don't care what I hit. I'm just gonna shoot into that house. Do whatever. The person in that home and his family now has the city. Or the or the government for support and they say, I don't worry about it. It's just a few random shots. It's nothing to worry about. Put yourself in that house. What if your neighbor was doing that to you? And you got no response from either the government or the police to help. That. Just doesn't seem right. Okay, now he takes another shot. Injured someone in your family. Comes across, grabs your dog out of your yard. Now that's a hostage. Once again, you're asking. For your government and your community to support you and you don't get it. Sorry. After the first five years, I think I'd be off clubs.
That's the three. Thank you. Go ahead.
Was that three?
That's three.
All right, uh, but you know, what's even worse is maybe none of your neighbors even come to your support. And what's worse is your neighbors won't even let. The guy who's shooting at you, him and his family that hate you, come into their own country. That that says a lot right there.
John, if you could finish up.
I will. So still, no one helps you resolve this. Would you tolerate that from your family and your friends who live next to you in the community? Finally, I recommend you read a couple of books from Leon Yuris. One is Exodus and the other is Mila eighteen. Which is a great review of the uh Israel state and the Jewish. Uh, community and also the gift of the Jews by Thomas Cahill. Let's learn about other cultures. Thank you.
Welcome, John. Ben in the oven.
Mister Mayor, uh, council members, I'm Ben Lewitt. And I appreciate your service to our community, enhancing Hood River. Through governance on vital municipal issues. While I understand the sincere motivations behind the proposed resolution. I urge you to decline adopting. Foreign policy falls outside of the defined roles and responsibilities of a city council. Your mandate is to enhance the quality of life in Hood River. Adopting this resolution oversteps your authority and sets a precedent. Where limited time and resources. Could be consumed by local, by non-local emotionally charged issues. This topic has already demanded hours and hours. And hours of attention diverting focus from municipal duties. Federal branches are equipped to handle foreign affairs through proper democratic processes. Laying in on this sensitive foreign issue could undermine your reputation for objectivity, efficacy. And public trust. Your responsibility rests on adherence to your mission. Enhancing Hood River's quality of life. Through through fair governance of municipal policies. Uphold this work. By declining this resolution and reaffirming your commitment to serving all citizens. On local issues within your jurisdiction.
Thank you, Beth. Oh, yeah, then Matt.
Hold on a second.
Go ahead.
Okay, Avi Cohen, uh, been part of the furniture here for thirty or more years. Um. I asked Jennifer to send me a copy of the proposed resolution and she sent me a copy and I was shocked. I was shocked because. It didn't take into account any of the points that were raised in the previous meeting. So that left me no option. I started a petition online. And I started the petition ten days ago. Unfortunately, I was out of the country for seven of these ten days. So I managed to count to gather only. Two hundred and eighty signatures. Requesting the city to amend the the uh. Motion as follow. First of all, change the title. To a ceasefire between Israel and Gaza. Not occupied Palestine. That's an anti Semitic term. In addition, I asked you to add to the resolution. That the city of Hood River recognize Hamas as a terrorist organization. This has been recognized by worldwide and people are aware of it. Any ceasefire, that's my next point, any ceasefire. Must include the immediate and unconditional return of all the hostages in Gaza. And I did send you all by email a list of all the hostages with a biography. From a one year old baby that celebrated his first year birthday in captivity. To women that were raped. To Holocaust survivors. And to young people that were in a concert and were abducted into Gaza. Calling for a ceasefire without releasing the hostages is telling Hamas it's okay, you can keep on. Doing what you've done, terrorize the country. Thirdly. The city of Hood River must denounce antisemitism. What we're seeing in the city nowadays is a rise of antisemitism. And this will not go peacefully. You must denounce it. I I agree with Ben that it's outside the jurisdiction of the Hood River City Council. To get involved in international affair in the Middle East. I don't think that you are qualified for it. Sorry, not disrespect. But you are not qualified. To deal with the Middle East. And the complexity. I would like one of you to put forward the motion calling to. Include the amendment. Into the resolution. Any one of you, would you be so kind? And put forward the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Pope. Matty?
Mister Mayor, Councilor, since you're listening to us again, I'm. Mostly here to go on the record. Supporting Ben's position. I'm also. Imploing um the members of the meeting who want to get it together and discuss this to. Um, issue and have a forum. Outside of the city council, which I appreciate. There's this been this public forum here in this in the city council chamber, but I think it. Could do well to step outside of it into, you know, a larger public forum. Um, but to reiterate Ben's point, I feel like. A resolution doesn't make sense for the city council to make. I'd I'd ask you. Not not to not to carry it forward and instead a different. Place to get uh a forum, made letter writing. To get people's opinions and feelings out to decision makers on foreign policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming to testify. Thank you all for coming to witness. Uh, that concludes the public testimony on this topic. Uh, deliberation, we have included in the packet two different options. As I see it, we could. Pass uh neither of those. We could pass one of those uh similar to the mural discussion. This is. Uh, a very uh. Very intense uh important issue with uh feelings running high. We don't fill the halls. Of this room uh for things like sewers and cops and snowplowing. Sometimes schools, but I don't mean to make light of this in any way. As a as a comparison, my daughter is the director of communications for a member of Congress. Her boss name is Lucy Macbeth. She's kind of famous because she's the black woman whose black son was shot dead in the parking lot of the gas station. Because he was playing music loud and there was a screaming about that. So Lucy went from being a. Stewardess to a fight attendant to a uh a gun safety advocate to running and winning for Congress in a couple of different districts and. Uh, it's unbelievably heartbreaking that she lost her son. It's unbelievably heartbreaking what's happening in the Middle East. So. Sort of like the murals, if we get to four votes, that's a that's a yes. So would somebody like to uh. Put put forward one of the two choices, champion champion one of the two choices, or would y'all like to talk about the merits of both of them? I don't want to preclude anyone from having a chance to speak, but we certainly don't need to preach at each other, right? Thank you.
Um, I guess. I will start. So I um. As always, this has been really hard. I mean, what's been going on is. Horrific and I understand the passions of folks that are here. Um. As I had said before, a couple of meetings ago. Um, I don't think. Think us um making resolutions about things that don't have a real tie to the city or our community. Um, is is in our. Our role or in our best interest. Um. And so, but in earlier testimony, we had certainly heard about, um, there has been an increase in, um, you know, anti Muslim and anti Semitic. Um, commentary or action in this community and I think. Um, making some sort of statement that that is not within the values that this council holds in particular to our community. Um. Can be an appropriate place for us. Um, so I. Am not the wordsmith that is very good at this, but I drafted some very draft language kind of saying uh something to that effect of. Um, that we don't. Or what did I actually say? Uh, basically that we can condemn um anyone making members of our community or visitors to our community feel unwelcome or unsafe.
I thought it was fantastic. Do you mind if I read it? The proposed statement says, the Hood River City Council is disappointed to learn. That there has been an increase in anti Muslim and anti Semitic rhetoric and acts within our community in recent months. The city is working internally to increase racial and social equity and envisions a community where every person feels safe. As such, the Hood River City Council condemns actions that make community members or visitors to our community. Feel unwelcome or unsafe as a result of their religion, race, or cultural or ethnic background. I don't want to have a motion and a vote on that without having a chance for the folks who worked hard on the. Other uh uh text that was included, having a chance to bring it forward. Somebody, do you want to sort of champion that as 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 Megan championed this?
Yeah, I want to first start off with the. Thanking everyone that's here today. Um, for taking time out of your day to attend the last four meetings around this topic. Whether you are for or against this matter, thank you for being here. To those in support, I appreciate your kindness and coming together to support our and your local community. Members that are affected by these matters. I also appreciate you all holding us accountable to say something and for us to do something. We work really hard to ensure that infrastructure, public service, fees. Budget and any other procedure that impacts the operations of the city that they're running smoothly. But it is also our responsibility to ensure that we have all the resources put in place to ensure that everyone in our community feels welcomed and included within the city of Hood River. This matters because it's coming directly from you. Our constituents, the ones that put us here, and therefore it should matter to this council. To my peers. This is not going to be the first or the last time that this continues to come up. So I think in the long run, we do need to have a process on how we're going to address this. Moving forward. I also completely understand that for the most part, we typically don't involve all of ourselves in foreign policy. But this has been four meetings now and we cannot ignore our constituents. They're not asking us for money. They're not asking us to change our zoning. They are asking that we be intentional and that we iterate that in this community. We welcome everyone. Hate has no place here. We want every human who resides here to feel welcome and included. Regardless of the language that you speak, the color of your skin, how you identify. Or what you choose to practice. So I would just urge us to. Pass this resolution and that we continue to add our name and be another designated body. That is continuing to push on our federal policymakers. To. For this immediate ceasefire and for us or to ensure that release of hostages is also taking place.
Thank you, guys.
Ooh, sorry, I have one more. Um, Counselor Kunehan was not able to be here and so uh he has asked me to read a statement. This is from Counselor Tim Kunehan. Hi folks, I'm unfortunately, I unfortunately will not be able to make it tonight. I was hoping that I could, but I'm having health issues that is not allowing it. Sorry. With the respect to the resolution, while I'm not there to vote, I'm requesting that glad to read the following statement. Mayor, fellows, counselors, staff and citizens of Hood River. Apologies for not being able to attend tonight. While I'm not able to vote tonight, I wanted to advocate for the version of the peace resolution that Counselor Rivera supports. Sincerely, Counselor Tim Kunehan. Let me know if you have any questions. Trust me, I'd be there if I could. Thanks, folks. Tim.
Thank you, guys. Okay, I'm I'm glad about that. Both of these sort of got a got a uh an appearance here. Um, and it certainly occurs to me, we could pass zero, one, or two of these. Doug?
I'll just add that I think I I agree with with Counselor Kunehan, with Counselor Rivera. That's where my head is. Uh, I I agree with everything you just said. Thank you for putting it so eloquently. Um, I I would uh. Um, in terms of language, about what I see here and what we've worked on. I I would think it would be pertinent, at least for me, to recommend that, you know, release of any hostages in Gaza be added. Um, I think that um. The question of antisemitism, Islamophobia, et cetera, is is called out within here. I I think that if we're asking for. You know, um. Calling upon by administration to set and facilitate the entry of humanity, uh humanitarian assistance into Gaza, peaceful diplomatic measures, et cetera, that we should also mention. Release of hostages.
Well.
So, um, I I appreciate the work done by my fellow counselors to to get this nice. Uh, I still think that a statement by the city is the most appropriate way forward. Um, I I think that underlining some of the things in the in the uh resolution language is great though to. Um, the city Hood River is a community that's inclusive and welcoming to all people. That's our job. That's all of our jobs to make sure that's true. To reaffirm that we infamatically condemn all hate crimes and hate speech, uh, you know, everywhere, but especially in our community. And that, uh, you know, any antisemitism or anti, you know, Islamophobia is is not acceptable and. And to encourage things like uh Matthew mentioned to, you know. If 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 we can facilitate or just encourage discussions within the community that that. Helps. People towards healing. This this is, this is an incredibly complicated and very, very long topic and and stuff. It doesn't. Us doing a statement doesn't minimize that. It it it's, this is, this is, this is real and it's and it's human level and it's. Um, and it's big. So I I think that those things come out in the in the language of the statement. Um, and and I just think that that's the most appropriate way to state these things.
Brett?
Uh. I want to say that no matter which direction we chose choose to go, whether it be either of these options or none of those options. I would hope that the public does understand that. No matter what the outcome is, it's not due to lack of compassion or caring for everyone in the community. Um, we all believe that everyone universally has rights, freedoms. We all believe that everyone universally has rights, freedoms. Privileges is the wrong word, but. We, we respect everyone, welcome everyone. We, we honor everyone's right to make their voice heard. We appreciate those rights. Across all time, space, not limited to just a finite locality. We globally recognize those things. And so that's where I'm at, just with regard to this. That's all I feel like saying about it.
I just don't feel like having a statement is intentional. There was another time. You know, a couple of years ago where there was a lot of social unrest and. If we're committed to equity, then again, this is not going to be the last time that this comes up. So. You know, is there going to be a resolution for every single time? Do we update our previous resolution? This isn't going to end and I don't think that having this statement out just truly addresses that. Again, this is what it takes to be equitable, to do more work, especially for marginalized communities, especially when they are present in this room. Today and they continue to come time and time again to tell us. So I don't think that having a statement is enough for this specific matter. That continues to come up by our constituents. So I truly feel that this council should approve the resolution. That is put in this packet and that we add the statement and they're about releasing hostages. We have taken the time to make sure that this resolution is a mix of several resolutions. That have come through, through the House of Representatives, through other different local and. And other municipalities within the US. So let's be intentional. Let's continue to have Hood River be a place where we welcome all of our individuals regardless of, of, regardless.
This was a moment where it was really great for me to have my Equity Advisory Council. And in our last meeting, I was able to ask. Members of the community who were not old white men, I was able to ask Latinos and Indians what they thought about this question. And I'm here to tell you that it was, it was, it was not a thundering unanimous voice. I was a little bit surprised that in my opinion, my memory of the conversations where it was intended more towards. Stay in your lane, mayor. Don't, don't speak on this. You're here to do important things, but foreign policy is not one of them. So I really appreciate having. Those voices in my more inner circle to advise me on this matter.
And those are still just some voices, not the voices of every community member, every marginalized community member here. So I am going to move forward that we adopt the proposed resolution. On page forty-three and that we add the release of hostages.
Rooted by Gladys.
Second.
Second by Doug. We did it before. We did well. Let's raise our hands. All in favor. One, two, all, three.
Just as, as far as, I, I told you and some other people that I, I prefer the statement, but I was. I wanted to not vote no against a resolution for peace. And, and so I, I think that I, I will vote yes.
One, two, three.
Does Timbo, does his count? No.
Opposed. One, two, motion fails. Would somebody move the statement?
I would move the. I don't know if it's a doctor, just make a statement using the language on page forty-four of the packet.
Moved by Saunders.
Second.
Second by Paulson. Further discussion?
I, I will vote yes on this as well because I think that something is important and, and, and I think the statement is good.
I don't disagree with the statement, but I don't think it's enough. So I'll vote no.
Other deliberation? All in favor, hands please. One, two, three, opposed. Two, chair votes high, statement passes. Again, thank you all. I, it's kind of a no win situation. I'm sure there's a lot of people who are going to choose the other mayor. Thanks again. We're going to take a break.
We're gonna reconvene here and we'll all visit the discussion of hotel program and I'm gonna compliment my counselor Holly. For being scrupulously for choosing my wishes.
I am recruiting myself and not be involved or commenting on any way, shape or form with this in case the public is not aware. I own a hotel here locally. I have not talked with my fellow counselors about this. We'll refuse to do so, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm out.
Thank you. Forgot to turn my mic on, sorry y'all. Bob, do you like the, I mean, do you want to?
That's good. Go ahead.
It's not due to speak for a while and then it will go on the second. That's okay. Thank you. Thanks for your bill. I know it's my show and I'm trying to figure that.
Well, Mayor, counselors, it's nice to be back. When I walked in, folks asked me to hear talk about the girls. I know you already know how I feel about that. So we'll talk, we'll talk about some hotels today, specifically the hotel incentive plan. So I think you've all seen this and you know what I'm talking about. Excellent. Thank you. So by way of context, I am part of a group that owns the historic Oklahoma Hotel on Second and Cascade. It's the big red brick building you see on the way into town right there. I think you all know. Quick overview, as you probably were, the top three stories that building have been abandoned fifty years. It was a hotel previously, but half century of non-use up there. Varyingly boarded and not board windows and you know, all this stuff that happens with derelict spaces. We're doing a full historic restoration of the building. It's gonna be sixty-nine rooms, transient lodging rooms. There will be a spa in the basement. We've excavated down. There's gonna be a rooftop lounge. Main floor is gonna be a hub and there may be a bodega in there as well. We haven't yet figured out if it's a bakery or a bodega or something else in extra space. So lots going on in there. It is the oldest currently standing hotel building in Hood River. So we're really excited to be restored to use, built in nineteen oh four when the river, you know, really boomed as a city initially. There's a lot of history tied into that. So really proud of the fact that we can bring back to life this historic building and we think there's a lot of public benefit there as well. A few things I just want to list, you know, we are talking about between forty and fifty living wage jobs as we'll create and that's in addition to all the construction jobs that have to happen in order for it to be brought back into service. Obviously, I've talked about the fact that we're activating restoring historic building that I think is its own benefit for the community. There will be meeting spaces in there. I've approached the city previously. We discussed about having that be available for for nonprofits and public entities who need meeting space. And then additionally, of course, I think the eight hundred pound gorilla for this, from the city's perspective, is new transient lodging tax capacity in all of those rooms, right? So why are we doing this? Or why, why am I here to support this? There are a lot of challenges with our project that you're probably, they're esoteric to historic specifically, but also non-corporate, non-flagged, locally owned hotels. You may be aware, you know, restoring a historic hotel is actually dramatically more expensive than building a ground up new hotel. You're dealing with construction techniques and materials that are not something we use anymore. Unreforced masonry, really hard to make a seismicly sound. We are doing that. You know, dealing with windows that need to be restored to their store or darn it, get there. Man, have your, thank you very much. I'll go as fast as I can, I promise. There are a lot of additional costs, suffice to say. Additionally, because of that half a century of non-use in top three stories, the law requires that the city treat those stories, those floors as abandoned to use. So even though we're storing it to its hotel use, we have to pay all the fees, all the permits, all the SDCs as though it's a new use, right? So you know, it's the rules, it's law, we operate under that, you know, it is what it is, but it creates that additional cost burden that we have to deal with. And then financing, which I want to talk a lot more about. Finance for these kinds of projects is.
Please don't talk a lot more about it.
I'll talk a little bit more about it. It's a deal. Hospitality is considered a very risky class of loans. Particularly non-corporate, non-franchised hotels are even higher level of risk from a bank's perspective. Rural markets like ours, they don't even want to talk about it because they don't have data, right? You know, and look at Starz reports, they don't do a whole lot of work here. So we're already in a high rate environment right now historically. And so all those things come together, make it very, very difficult relative to when we started this process. Right? We started this process when we were in a time of pretty, pretty low rate money. Not anymore. Specifically, we're looking at the one loan that's on the table. It's a lender of last resort USDA backed loan. Those are very expensive. We're looking at nine and a half percent interest rate is what's available. I don't know what your mortgages are, but I'm guessing they're not nine and a half percent. Over a million dollars in fees for the loan guarantee through USDA over the course of the loan. That's up from about six and a half percent, which was our expectation coming into this project before if this rates really went through the roof. So it's a real difference. Additionally, all of us local owners are making personal guarantees on this loan. That means if it goes belly up, we're on blame line. We, all of our assets are recoupable by those banks. That's real risk. Now, something called a debt service coverage ratio, which means how much money are you making relative to how much money do you owe in your payments, right? Normally for a project like this, you know, you'd want to see at least a one point five, probably more comfortably one point seven. You're making a hundred fifty percent to a hundred seventy percent of the money you need to pay your debt service, right? Debt service coverage ratio. Right now, that USDA loan in our ramp up, which is about a three-year ramp to stabilization for operations, we're anticipating about a point eight eight year one debt service coverage ratio, right? That means we only anticipate making eighty-eight percent of the money we need to pay the loan, right? Now, we can capitalize some of that interest into the loan and we will if we have to, if we choose to go for that route. That means we're borrowing more money to make sure we have enough money to pay the debt service while they get to stabilization. It's a really risky place to be, especially when we're personally guaranteeing these loans. If this proposal were to pass, you know, what we anticipate is that we go from a point eight eight debt service coverage ratio in year one to a one point oh five, which means we anticipate making five percent more money than we need in year one to pay our debt service, right? And we go in year two from a one point one five, which is still uncomfortably tight, to a one point three five, which is almost sleep well at night. You know, it's, it's, it's a really big difference for us. So that's the two years we're talking about in this proposal. It's really our riskiest period. It would help us to have a lot more comfort now.
Could you could finish up?
I'm, I'm, I'm building to the dramatic conclusion. The so what? The so what is we own that building outright, right? We have no debt on it. We do not need to make money on that building right now or at any point in the immediate future to be okay. We just need to stop spending money. You know, Jeremy Powell has said, you know, this year we expect three rate decreases from the Fed, right? There's not big ones, they're small ones. So to get back to where we thought we were gonna be, we're looking at a multi-year consistent rate decreasing process, right? Our choice right now is do we take on this personal risk, you know, with that really expensive debt, you know, or do we just hold what we got? You know, pause at a certain point and say, hey, you know what? The rates are not coming down. We haven't found any new loans that are going to de-risk us somewhat. Let's just hit the pause button and wait for rates to come down. This proposal, at no budgetary impact to the city, would allow us to get to a point where we would have real comfort to just keep charging forward and get this thing open. So that's why I'm supporting it. Obviously, I have a personal interest, you know, I hope that you'll, that you'll move this thing forward because it would make a big difference for us. Thank you.
Thanks for taking on this beautiful building. It's been shut for the twenty-four years I've been here. I don't want to see it open.
Yeah, thank you.
Abigail.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the chance to bring you a concept tonight, and that's truly what we're talking about at this point, still very much a concept. And I want to give credit to Mr. Tesmer, Steve Tesmer here. You know, many of you have met with Steve and had conversations with him as well. This has really evolved since those initial conversations. So the city has ambitious goals and projects which we as staff work on, many of which require funding such as environmental improvements, hydro power generation, infrastructure improvements, and of course, working for additional housing. In addition, the city's budget looks good. Yes, looks good for now in the short term. And we'll of course be diving deeply into the budget in the next couple of months with our new budget committee members. But we expect long-term pressures on their budget, including inflation, rising labor and purse costs, ongoing maintenance of our aging buildings, increased expectations of other, of services and other other things that as we look over the expenses over the next several years. So Chris and I and others have spent time trying to think about how can we diversify and increase, you know, the parts of the budget that are kind of like within our control. As a city, we don't spend a lot of time on economic development, but what we bring to you, this concept really is an economic development program for your consideration. So providing a limited incentive for hotel construction could increase, of course, revenue in transient lodging tax. That's the obvious one and the one that would be ongoing. It also would increase tax property revenue, also ongoing. And then the third one is tax increment funding in our urban renewal district. So if a hotel was expanded or built in the west side, urban renewal district or in the heights, that would add to the tax increment funding of those districts. Hotels are unique in that they generate a tax on tourism. We don't have any other industry that kind of creates its own independent tax like this. And we would hope that increasing a hotel tax would lessen or could lessen the future burden on residents and businesses. We've heard several times, and I think you received a message from Taran Patel, who's the owner of the Columbia Gorge Hotel. He had hoped to be here tonight, that lots of times people spend the day in Hood River, but then they leave the city to find a hotel bed. That means that we bear the cost of that tourism, but we don't capture the revenue. The incentive amount is probably too small to bring potential hotel developers out of the woodwork or to make infeasible projects suddenly feasible or attractive. Instead, it would probably help hotel projects that are on the bubble, to use Chris's phrase, to help them attract better financing, improving the project's debt ratios, or ensure that a hotel can operate from a more secure position in its first couple of years. So those are the, that's the thinking behind staff bringing this to you is, you know, selfishly about how can we increase city revenues? How can we try to ensure historic buildings, you know, as I think about Columbia Gorge Hotel and the Oklahoma Hotel is our examples in front of you, that they remain healthy. But I want to stop at that point. That's the concept. And we'll look at Chris if he's got anything to add at that. And then if you're interested, we can talk about details. If you're not interested, we can stop the conversation.
Yeah, I will add, just because to sort of address sort of why now, why this, right? So the, the League of Oregon Cities just conducted a meeting in Duffer last week and the entire topic of the, of the, the conversation was generating new revenues for cities, right? And so, you know, I just, and, and thanks to Dustin who sent me the, the materials, but in their report, really circulated today, twenty twenty-four State of the Cities Report, I just wanted to read sort of one of the key findings, which is traditional revenue sources for cities like property taxes and utility franchise fees are not keeping pace with inflation, compelling cities to either cut spending, eliminate services, or rely on alternate revenues. The other thing that I thought was very interesting was in just sort of a two-year period of time, sixty-one percent of the cities felt that the, the general fund revenue anticipated to keep pace or exceeded current needs in the future. You know, sort of moved to twenty twenty-four and the number of cities that agree with that statement has dropped to below fifty percent. So, you know, as I look at the city's budget, I get concerned with regards to expenses that are outpacing revenues, particularly in, you know, over the last couple of years where we were in an inflationary environment, right? And so the, the city of Hood River is uniquely positioned in that in addition to property taxes and franchise fees, there is a significant revenue source available in transit lodging tax. Again, as, as Abigail mentioned, this is a, a product type that, that comes with its own sort of tax, right? Very, very unique to any other, you know, sort of property category that can be developed. So just sort of on the, on the, you know, to, to reiterate the concept, I think this is something that is particularly topical, very, very timely and something that a lot of cities are dealing with. Right? The, the city of Hood River is uniquely positioned to, to take advantage of such opportunities.
Great, thank you. So this is sort of the first, this is actually the first time we've, we've talked about this, as I mentioned an hour ago, like we don't talk, you know, the, the group of us. So this, all, all our, all our problem solving happens as a group in, in. This is the first time we've heard, heard this collectively. We've had many discussions with staff and with, with Steve about this individually, but this is where we get to take each other's temperature. So to some extent, I think the question is, I think, Abigail, you said like, are we interested in learning more about this or like, yeah, no? This would be that moment. I know that Megan has a number of specific questions. Before we get to that, let's, let's not start with Megan on that, but others like, yes, let's, let's learn more or no, or can we get some general, general gut check here from people? Doug?
Yes, let's learn more.
Yeah, I'm supportive. Great. Megan, will you ask some of your questions?
Well, I'm gonna start with the broad one first, which I don't know if it's a question or comment, but I, you know, in the same vein that we don't try to add a bunch of new projects halfway through the work plan year or add a bunch of new budget things halfway through the budget year, I don't love the idea of considering this in isolation without a far bigger understanding of our budget as a whole and where it's at and all the different potential dials we could, we could move, you know, to change revenue or expenses. I think a conversation around this is very different if we're talking about, oh, it'd be nice to have more revenue versus oh, in five years, we're gonna have to do a hiring freeze versus in a year, we have to fire three people. Like, those are very different scenarios. And I don't know, I don't feel comfortable and I'm confident where we are in that cycle. In addition, and I know Chris touched on this a bit, but I think there are various other dials we can talk about, whether that's expenses or it's, you know, sparing a bunch more housing development does increase property tax because you've got the additions to the tax rolls or re-looking at our franchise fees does change that. And, you know, we just increased, we will be increasing parking revenues given we just increased that fee in our last meeting. And so I don't want to talk about this just alone, on its own, to say, oh, wouldn't it be fun? I want to have a real understanding of what our budget looks like, what the future of it looks like, what are our goals? Does this fit in our goals? Is this the best way to reach our goals? I think it's not gonna be good policy to just look at this to look at it.
Help me remember. I think we have a three-year rolling forecast as a part of our annual budget cycle. Can you remember how much of that I got wrong?
Like, it is three years.
Correct.
Yeah, that is correct.
None. So, so we, we, we have a book ahead that's now nine months old and in six weeks we'll have the next book ahead. So not that that's an adequate answer, but that's some of that answer, that answer. It's already, that's already included in, in what we can.
Well, like, correct. We will look at that. I don't, and certainly in our other budget years, we haven't had the broader conversation of what are our different dials? What are our goals? What, what revenue or expenses would we want to change to reach those goals? We can really just look at the year ahead.
The only, the only thing I'll add to that. Because I probably do spend more time with the budget, right, than, particularly right now. I think that's a lot. All right. I mean, I, I, I think the reality is that we will be talking, if not this budget season, and then in future budget seasons, about how do we balance the budget? Right? How do reoccurring, how do reoccurring revenues match sort of recurring expenses? And, and a lot of the budget, particularly in the general fund, are things that, you know, the city hopes to have money for non-recurring projects, right? To be able to sort of put money into housing initiatives, be able to put money into certain energy initiatives, be able to put money into things that are on the city council. No, no. From my perspective, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about trying to tackle too much at, at one time, right? Franchise fees is a municipal code of them. You know, so if you want to change sort of the franchise fees, that's sort of looking at the municipal code. Looking at expenses and sort of budget cuts always, always very difficult to, to sort of have in context. And so, you know, not that I'm opposed to sort of looking at every dial and sort of addressing it all, but the, but the, the options on the revenue side are extremely limited, right? There is no silver bullet. You know, there is not a change in marketing strategy that generates a lot more revenue, right? You know, it is, it is, it's statutorily restricted with regards to sort of property taxes. The city council has also made decisions with regards to, you know, sort of the URA, which will freeze property taxes, right? So the city, so, I mean, long-term benefit, absolutely, right? Fully, fully agree with it. But as far as what the impacts are of the general fund, you know, in sort of five to ten years' time, it will be significant. Right? So, you know, I think that trying to tackle everything at one time is very, very difficult, but should we be looking at sort of revenue opportunities as one of those dials when the opportunities come? You know, that's, that is my.
So bluntly, I'm gonna disagree because I think our job is to juggle, let's hold fifty things in our head at once to make a good decision, not let's look at one thing at a time and forget how it could impact other things down the road.
All right. So. To me, this, this program is, is cost contained and is, you know, after, after whatever period of time staff recommends is, is positive revenue. So I, I, I don't think that I need to understand where it fits into the whole giant structure to, to say that this feels like a good thing to do. I, I certainly agree that the structural analysis that says, you know, is our, are our expenses out of control with respect to our revenue, that we have to do that. I think that we have to question how conservative or aggressive to estimate any income stream and, and TRT is one of them, but, but if in, in this case, it's, we know that we have the ability to say, okay, we'll facilitate a, a, a slower ramp on, on some of these fees and that enables some some construction of hotel rooms, then to me, it's just, I, I don't need, I don't need to know the whole structure to, to say yes to that. I, I, I need to be comfortable with more hotel rooms are, are good for the community and I'm personally fine. I, I like that, but I don't think it's out of control. And, and, but I think that that's the only real question for right now is, is hotels not hotels? If we say hotels are okay, then, then this, this seems pretty no, it's only gonna increase, right?
Mayor.
I think there's two other things besides that. There is the long-term structural thing for our budget of do we, this is already our second largest budget source for the general fund. Do we want to be consolidating versus diversifying our budget sources? Especially in something that is very cyclical with the economic, you know, boom bust cycle. Is that healthy for our budget to not be talking about long-term stable things, but things that will have highs and lows resulting in, I assume, repeatedly having to hire and fire? In addition, I do think, especially given our conversation last meeting about the fact that TRT revenues have been going down and demand is reducing, there is a risk that we actually will lose TRT money if we do this program in the next few years because we build more hotel rooms, we spread the hotel rooms. There are gonna be fewer people staying in the existing hotel rooms because some of them will be staying in the new ones or having more hotel rooms will reduce the nightly cost of them, in which case our current revenue is actually increased. I think we need to be aware of that.
Fine.
So I, I think that enabling a revenue stream is completely different from estimating what that revenue stream is gonna be. So if there's, if there's peak years and soft years, that's up to the budget process to guess. And I would say do it conservatively, that you don't count on every possible penny. You count on half of the pennies or, or some number that Chris helps us get to and the budget committee reviews and agrees. So you can turn on a, a spigot without saying we have to, we're gonna all of a sudden become addicted to a maximum analysis of that spigot. I think, I think they're two different things.
I just want to remind us that the idea is that this is just a concept and that we're giving staff the direction to give us even more details. I also want to bring up the fact that we have a bridge that's going to get built and that that's going to bring in a hundred and fifty to two hundred plus workers, right? So there's an opportunity in the long run as this is happening that I would rather have those workers be in hotel rooms because I don't think fifteen five-wheelers up at Cardinal Glass is gonna house everybody. I'd rather have these individuals be at hotels as opposed to competing with community members for housing. So that's definitely something for us just to keep in mind as, as this is happening simultaneously. Again, this is just a concept that is being brought to us. Staff will continue to work out those details. And then we can bring all of our questions and concerns that we have directly to staff and they can take that as they are finalizing concepts because if our director of finance is telling us, hey, here's another way to diversify and to bring in additional revenue into our general fund that we can use that's less restrictive than some of the other funding that we have available for housing or for additional staff, that this is something that we should look at and, and at least consider and have staff work out those details.
Doug?
I guess I have two questions. Number one, Abigail, you mentioned this would not incentivize new developments for later, correct?
I don't think it would make an infeasible project feasible or, or attract, you know, a lot of hotel developers. There may be developers out there who are already interested in whoever, who could be interested in this program, but I don't think it's gonna bring somebody who's not already interested in the area.
Why?
I think that the financial incentive is not that big when it comes to the total cost of a project.
Yeah, and the, you know, as a sort of indicative, we're talking about projects that have sort of eighteen to twenty-two million dollar development budgets, and this is in the aggregate, a half million dollar incentive. You know, it, what it, what it does and, and, but, and I also should note, you know, we haven't gone through sort of the, the sort of general dynamics of the descriptions of the project. But this is not a front end, this is not a front end subsidy. You know, it does not reduce any of the upfront costs. They all sort of get paid by the developer. So this is not, this is not an upfront financing piece that helps someone sort of plug a budget gap, you know, or sort of satisfy a development sort of need or sort of funding need. It really is sort of, once the project is complete, once the project is open, you know, the ability to recoup, you know, the SDCs proportioned share, money that the project spent on infrastructure additions through a, a limited time period, recoup of the TLT that is generated by the actual project. You know, the, 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 the structure in and of itself is just not enough money to make infeasible projects feasible.
Okay. Regarding these developments, the pro forma for these developments, how involved will the city be in ensuring that we are blessing a project that is economically feasible and expects to receive revenue? And how much will we be able to, to Megan's point, you know, and I think a lot of our points, be able to forecast out what the impact that we think this will be on our budget and relative to, you know, as Paul mentioned, a three-year trend, you know, would you be able to present us the current three-year trend? Here's what the impact would be based on what this project looks like?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll address, you know, I mean, hotel, I mean, to Megan's point, like hotels are volatile, right? There's no question. And so, you know, the, the idea with this program was keep the risk with the developer. Right? I mean, that this, you know, so what does the, what in our idea does the, does the city present or the, sort of the developer present to the city? You know, one, sort of development costs, right? The ability for the city to, to review, examine, you know, sort of question what are the actual development costs, particularly as it relates to what sort of the maximum incentive that could be received is. I don't know if Dan's still on the, on the line, but you know, statutorily, the developer will have to demonstrate a economic public benefit that is at least equal to the incentive that is gonna be received, right? Right? So that's something that the city sort of receives, examines, um, you know, sort of, and agrees to. Uh, and then with regards to, um, how the incentive is, is sort of paid and received, uh, there is a schedule that would create, one, the maximum incentive that can be received, but then the maximum that we receive under any single given year. Um, and that's going to be based on what the developer believes the hotel will do in occupancy and, uh, and, and hotel, um, what we call A D R, average daily rate. Uh, and so, um, if the project underperforms and does not create the T L T that, uh, that is sort of, you know, the pro forma T L T, uh, that falls to the developer as far as, uh, you know, sort of reduced incentive received and, and not to the, not to the city.
And I guess to that point, um, yeah, I, I guess the idea is, you know, we forego some T L T for a few years because then we'll have a hotel for sixty-five years. What, what assurances that isn't converted into bottom housing?
So actually, uh, so as, so as, so as part of the, um, you know, as, as part of the, so we've envisioned that there would be a, uh, you know, an incentive agreement, right? About maximum hotel incentive development agreement. Um, and in that would be certain standards, uh, that the hotel has to sign up for three, two, right? So one of them, and again, these would be things that the council would, you know, sort of determine. Um, but things that we proposed is, uh, you know, a, a restriction on use, um, that would ma- maintain a hotel, um, you know, for a, a set number of years, certain number of years. Uh, you know, there is also, um, agreements, uh, that have been adopted by other municipalities, also have things like minimum operating standards. Right? So, um, you know, sort of what are, what are some of the things that the hotel has to do with, with regards to sort of condition or status, right? Sort of it always has to maintain, you know, sort of a three-star status or whatever it is that sort of opened up as. Um, so there are certain, there are certain things that would, that would run, uh, with the agreement. Um, that would sort of dictate some things we were speaking to.
Thank you. I don't know how far into the details we need to get, but as, as an example, a couple of details that come to mind for me are there's a financial incentive for the city to have this happen anywhere, but even greater incentive for it to happen in the West Side Urban Renewal Area. This could be a really nice way to get some revenue flowing into that sooner. We, the, 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 the West Side Urban Renewal Area will, uh, advance more quickly and our just, our goals will be accomplished more quickly if we see development in that area. So that's, that's not to the interest of Mr. Littler, um, but that's, that's like a question, but you're not asking that tonight, right? That's, that's more detail than you need from us tonight.
Are you saying in terms of like geography, if you wanted to?
Right.
Yeah. Um, no, that's a piece of criteria that you can consider if you wanted to. It's not something that we had put in our, um, comments here, but.
Right.
Yeah. Do you want to kind of walk through the, in your packet was kind of some details about how, uh, Chris and I thought this program might?
I think.
The criteria, and then maybe, um, this will give us some, um, good feedback on some real specific questions.
Right.
Great. Um, so the first piece is that eligibility. So mayor, what you just said could fall into that where maybe it's a, um, you want to incentivize, um, projects in certain parts of town that you thought were, um, more important or more attractive. Um, but we just generally have a number of bullet points there that we would, um, if a hotel approached us and said they were interested, we would determine what the maximum aggregate hotel incentive would be, that being the maximum value of the city imposed cost. So this is not school district costs or park costs or building fees, because, you know, we share those with the state. These would be things that are fees within our, um, city control. Um, and then we would, uh, find that, uh, maximum aggregate hotel incentive costs or, um, price. Um, the development, as Chris said, they'd have to open their pro forma to us, um, so, and demonstrate a financial need to the incentive. We would probably provide you with a report so that you could evaluate that financial need and determine whether you wanted to, um, award this or not. Um, the dem- and then the development would have to have what, uh, Chris just called a qualified public benefit. There would have to be something that is not just about tourism, right? It is, uh, a swimming pool, an entertainment area, it's meeting room space, um, something that you as city council decided was, um, benefited our whole community and not just who are sort of visiting here and staying in the hotel. Um, and then finally, um, we would review all of these pieces, bring you, um, a report for your, and recommendation for your consideration. So it'd be, uh, in our mind, a pretty transparent process, but it is for you to determine, um, each one of these as they come forward. Um, and then, uh, I'll stop there. Any questions about eligibility, your thoughts? So guys, I'll just move on to eligible costs.
Mm-hmm. I, I'm just wondering, um, Dan's opinion, um, enforceability, you know, let's say we say yes to, to something, we feel that it provides a public benefit and the next one, we don't feel that it does and it's sort of subjective.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, city's getting sued.
Playing fa- playing favorites.
Any thoughts on that, Dan?
Yeah, I don't see much likelihood of that. These are all different things, different performers, different set of circumstances, um, why we enter in a contract with uh, one company and not another, it all depends on what, what the deal is. You can't, no one can, I, I don't see a cause of action to force the city to enter into the, uh, an agreement with a hotel that, that doesn't meet our very subjective requirements.
I think you could also make a determination on other things like geography and also, you know what? We think we've got enough hotel rooms, like we think we're going to suspend this program or um, that brings, that might have too big of an impact on our community or other, other pieces that you as a council, you get to decide from a policy point of view.
So that, that's an interesting point, you know, I mean, we're considering the position in twenty-twenty-four and the outlook of our financial future. I mean, can we revisit this in twenty-twenty-six, et cetera? And I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that hypothetically, right? Not asking, actually make a policy decision on, on it, but, you know, um, I'm, I'm just wondering how much staff time that takes, you know, um, if we revisit all of this. To Megan's point, you know, this isn't something that's necessarily a, a stated goal. You know, funding stated goals is, is, I think, intrinsically related to this. But, um, you know, wh- what does it look like to, to review these? Um, what does it look like? Staff time, what does it look like for the city council's time? What does it look like for the city council to revisit this?
Yeah, I think we can speak a little on staff time. Chris wants to talk about that process.
I mean, I think the, the biggest lift, um, the biggest lift is really going to be on the, on the front end, right? I mean, we have a, I mean, Dan and I have worked on sort of a general form of agreement. Um, at least, you know, sort of that is flexible enough to incorporate whatever it is that either does or does not come out of this. Um, the big issue is really a lot of developer deliverables, right? And so it's, you know, it's the review of the pro forma, pro forma. Um, it's the qualification of what is the qualified public benefit. Uh, it's the presentation to, you know, it's a presentation to city council. Um, you know, and sort of, and, and a lot on the front end. Uh, on the back end, as far as administration, um, it's, it is, it doesn't add much to what the city process already is. Right? So the city right now, um, receives T L T, uh, as reported from individual properties, then takes that T L T and sort of separates it between the, you know, the city, uh, and the portion that goes towards tourism. Um, so this really just sort of adds a, you know, an additional distribution, right? Uh, from, you know, from portions of the T L T, uh, that are received from hotels. So it's not extra, you know, it's, it's certainly not extra staffing. Um, you know, and it's, and it's not significantly not work on, on administration. Um, it's also, it's also limited in duration, um, so it does sunset.
I, I would echo the critical importance of the front-end work and establishing criteria. What exactly are you looking for? It can't be wholly discretionary. So that would put the city council in a very difficult position and staff in a very difficult position. If you didn't pin down pretty objective set of criteria of what you're looking for here by way of, uh, you know, uh, uh, hotel and the public benefit you're looking for.
Right. Sorry, you said this program sunsets. Where does that get mentioned?
Oh, I mean, so, yeah, any individual agreement sunsets. Um, and then, uh, you know, we have discussed, I mean, internally,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it's up to city council for, for to, to determine, you know, whether this program is sort of a limited duration, whether it's up for review, um, you know, sort of what is the overall, uh, what's the overall sort of term of it? Um, I don't think, uh, for a number of reasons, I don't think any of us really thought of this as being sort of a permanent, sort of new, you know, ongoing with how it sunsets. Um, but again, I mean, that's all, that's all for council's decision consideration.
One of the vulnerabilities I thought about is I own a hotel, I have a hundred rooms, I put in fifty more rooms. Given that I don't pay T R T on those rooms, every single weekend, rooms one oh one through one fifty are full. Is that how this would work or can we like prevent that?
Oh. So on expansion, um, you know, I mean, the, for any individual expansion, uh, a de- developer just pays T R T on the hotel. Right? So it would, it would, you know, to a certain extent, it would have to be just sort of rely, you know, reliability of reporting. Um, now we have the, we have the ability to audit books. Um, you know, we have the ability to audit, I don't, you know, but it, it ultimately, um, much like the T L T program exists today. Uh, you know, we're relying on the, on the truthfulness of the taxpayer.
But the new rooms one oh one to one fifty are exempt because they're in the promotion. So I would fill my old rooms last.
We'd still collect that.
What's that?
We'd still be collecting the T R T, it's just that we're refunding it on a yearly basis.
Yes. Good, I'll think more through that. Thank you.
I'm going to jump on that because I guess especially in this realm of we're not looking at the pick of the rooms, it would in fact be quite easy for me as a businesswoman to go, oh, gosh, all of that T R T is from rooms one oh one to one fifty, which does feel like a really big issue.
All right, so I just, I, just for clarification, because I, um, the, the T L T that is remitted back to any developer in, in sort of any program is first paid to the city. Uh, and so that, so that, so that, so any T L T that a developer makes claim on sort of came from the rooms that they developed has the, has the first process through the city. Um, so, you know, I think that in a, in an, in a situation where someone is expanding and adding additional rooms, um, I don't think we apply necessarily these particular rooms split paid sort of T L T. Um, but, but no rooms are exempt from T L T. I just want to make sure that's clear.
I understand that, but what in that setting, let's say with the first hundred rooms that already exist, we are, and I'm going to get very bad numbers, so I apologize. Um, we collect a hundred thousand a year in T R T. Um, they build another fifty rooms. They get a hundred and twenty, comes back to the city. How do we decide what of that gets paid into this program versus what of that gets to actually stay in our general fund?
Um. I mean, we, we would either have to have them report on revenue per room. All right? Or we would just have to trust with developers reporting.
I think we'd also have, if it's an expansion, we also have the, you know, we know what they were making on previously the year before. So I don't know if that's helpful to like look at the data from previous years and then see what their new data is, right?
Well, that I guess, you know, is, is if we were getting a hundred thousand before, it can invite us, okay, we continue to get a hundred thousand and anything over.
Mm-hmm.
We consider your new rooms or how you do that because if it's not, I mean, if I wasn't unscrupulous in this person, I would just say, oh, gosh, it's all worth whatever the maximum I could say is.
Yeah.
The new rooms.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I mean, the easiest, the, the, the easiest answer for me as far as administering that would just be have the ability to audit books, which we would have. Right? And if, and if the city suspected, uh, that revenue received was, was not sort of on par with sort of expectations or if we felt that there were sort of games being played and the city had the right, then the city would have the rights of it, the, the hotel, hoteliers' books.
Good. I can raise this question. You should talk more about it. I, I think it's an interesting question. I don't think we've fully answered it yet, but this is the kind of thing that would be involved. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, and just to that point, I mean, how's it done today? You know, are you saying that today it's, we're receiving five hotel room, like one oh one, uh, room one oh one was sold and room one oh four wasn't?
It's just, it's recorded in gross.
Yeah, so, so we, we have no reason to distinguish between rooms in our current format.
No, of course not, but could it be proportionate, like, could it be a pro forma allocation that we do? That, that's proportional. You've got statistically this many rooms and that, that's the impact. And, and it seems like we should be able to do that. I, I'm not sure. Um, I would hope we'd be able to do that.
We can explore that. Thank you.
Correct. Okay, again, so there, there's not even a motion required.
I think Counsel Sanders has another question.
There is, uh, this, uh, we're, we're providing directions to set, Mayor.
So in the program eligibility stuff that you had talked about,
Mm-hmm.
and I guess especially with Dan saying that we should have objective criteria and subjective, I do think the first two bullet points of staff determines which of these things and other qualified charges do or don't count, and that feels very vague. I would love, if we're moving forward with any of this, I would love more detail of what other qualified charges are and are why we, why staff would or wouldn't include or not include these things.
Great. We can talk more about costs coming up.
Okay, and then the second one of demonstrating a financial need also feels very vague of what does that possibly mean from our end?
Got it. Thanks.
Or you, do you have some marching through left, you have some marching through left?
There are more points if you want to review them. How, how are we doing here?
Carry on.
Okay, so eligible costs, um, we had identified six categories. We put three in the eligible and three in the ineligible. Um, so eligible, we thought S D C's, proportionate share costs and construction excise tax. Right? Trying to find, uh, funding for housing. Um, ineligible, we put parking, lieu, building and permit fees because much of that gets sent over to the state. Um, and then fees that we collect for other agencies, specifically, um, Parks and Rec School District.
Great, thank you.
Just, Dr. Cummins, so keep moving.
Carry on.
Um, program administration, we've actually talked about quite a bit, right? That, uh, the project would pay all of the costs upfront. Um, and then, once they open operations, um, the incentive would, uh, be funded, uh, exclusively through, through T L T. So if they did not make it, they would not, you know, we, as Chris likes to say, um, this is like, uh, developer has to believe in their own pro forma, right? If, like, if they've fudged the numbers, this isn't going to work. I mean, not that they would fudge the numbers, but. Um, and then also would note that this assumes both the city and the Visit Hood River contribution. So I've talked to Katie Cadle, the executive director of Visit Hood River about this a couple of times. And I think Mr. Tesmer brought this to Visit Hood River, the concept early on. Um, but we've not had an extended conversation with their board, but I think that would be critical is that they would also need to, um, sign on to this. Um, not sign on approved, but sign on to like they recognize their T L T would also be part of the, um, be part of the contribution.
I have a, yeah?
Yeah.
That's, that's a good, I mean, that's a good question. It'd be really nice to hear formally from Visit Hood River about the decision on this, um.
For sure. I want to definitely bring the concept to you first before we went and talked to stakeholders, so.
Okay.
Um, and that is one of my other questions for you is are there other stakeholders behind, besides Visit Hood River that you want us to reach out to and research? Um, and then finally, I think the last piece is, uh, participation for a hotel would end either when they hit that, um, maximum uh, aggregate hotel incentive limit, you know, they've reached the compensation for those costs or, um, we're recommending a three-year term, like they've got three years to make it and if they don't, well, then they've received what they received and then, uh, a hundred percent returns back to the city starting at year four. So either way, either they make, you know, they make the, they recoup their amount or, um, three years is up and then, uh, all future dollars go to the city and Visit Hood River.
Yeah, I just, as a point of clarification as well, I think, um, you know, what we've tried to do is, is figure out a way in which this program can be administered in the context of a, of a budget season. Uh, and so there is, there is both a max, maximum aggregate incentive, right? The total amount of money that any hotel can recoup. Uh, but there is also a yearly cap, um, that again is calculated based off of the T L T that's expected to be generated by the property um, in any given year, right? So, uh, you're not getting into a situation where the, where the city is, is, uh, administering more T L T payment back to the developer than is budgeted in any, in any sort of given year. Um, so the idea being is, is that it sort of helps the, the city plan as far as how the ministers, as ministers to program.
Yes, I'd love to hear more about how staff came up with the three-year recommendation.
So, uh, there is, so in, in looking at, uh, some representative examples um, with regards to the, uh, the amount, the incentive that we received and the, and the revenue generated by the hotel um, in general, uh, sort of believing any individual pro forma, um, it covered, it, it generated enough T L T revenue to recoup there, uh, recoup the aggregate incentive in about eighteen to twenty months. Um, and so the three-year time plan, uh, gave the, uh, gave the developer sort of some leeway to, to sort of either underperform the market, right? Or have a slower ramp up, um, than was anticipated. Uh, and so it, it sort of, again, it, it allows enough runway, um, on the developer's side um, that they can reasonably recoup their costs, um, if the hotel sort of doesn't a hundred percent meet the pro forma.
Right, some of that could be, I mean, in the winter, we have a big snowstorm on a holiday weekend like we did in January, you know, so uh, room rates are depressed or our vacancies, you know, smoky summer, some of those things that are outside of the developer's control.
And of course, we could decide two or five was the right number.
Oh, totally. Yeah, yeah. That's our recommendation kind of based, as Chris said, on some representative samples and, uh, numbers that we ran. Oh, totally, yeah, yeah, that's our recommendation kind of based, as Chris said, on some representative samples and uh, numbers that we ran. We tried to do some modeling.
The, 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 the three-year also allows the program to run on a fiscal year. Um, so it 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 can make up for the fact that there's sort of a hotel opens in the middle of a fiscal year. Alright, so instead of a, so it'd be a three fiscal year program, um, you know, if they're open in the middle of the year, technically, that's sort of like a, you know, that's, that's technically a thirty month period.
Okay.
I I I think we're saying proceed. That's what it feels like, uh, the only thing I would say is, uh. Make it as simple for staff time to implement as possible, I mean, if there's, if there are things that we can. Push on the incentive, do it, um, cuz, cuz we, we want it to be. We don't wanna hear like, well, the administering this project is crossing this to F T E, uh, that, that would be a bad answer, uh. So, make it simple.
Thanks.
That reminds me of the conversation we had about short-term rentals, where there was a lot of concern about who's gonna be enforcing, it's like, well. Our vendor or our staff, and that's what happened, and it costs money, and that doesn't mean it's a bad idea. Anything else on this? I I agree with what Mark said, it seems like we're saying, please proceed. We brought up, you know, a number of issues, and there's probably eleven more we haven't thought of, but we're not saying, don't come back, go ahead.
No, no, yeah, I I I I agree with you, uh, I just would think, you know, if you can frame a lot, you know, of, of Councillor Saunders's concerns. And in the response as well, I think that would be helpful for me.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Doc.
And I think this conversation also kind of informs what our budget conversation might look like, we have budgets coming up in a couple months and. Um, maybe Mayor and I could talk a little bit further about like, what does that look like to uh, dive in, into a longer goal conversation? As opposed to just the three-year uh, projection. Here we are, got your work cut out for you.
Our country projects will be hotels, so all this is very.
Oh, very good.
Uh, the local brand start in Portland, urban development partners, uh, are investors, but, so. I understand that's about three-year, uh, that's a good frame for sort of a common uh, stabilization period for a hotel. So there's a lot that needs done that makes lots of sense.
Thank you, I look forward to your continued contribution.
Thank you, council.
Anything else on this? Great, thanks, Abigail, thanks, Chris. Thanks, Dana. Uh, that brings us to the end of the regular session, we do have an executive session, um, so we're, we're getting close, so. Uh, I'm sorry, is there anything else on this topic?
No, not this topic, I was just gonna move into city manager comments.
Yep, so city board, nothing, Jen, but go, yeah, go ahead, city manager comment.
Yeah. Come circle, come back up.
While, while Abigail's talking, I forgot about you, because you're very important.
Bunchy tonight, so I, I have just a couple of very quick updates for you, um, many of which maybe you already know. Um, the first one, uh, you might remember, gosh, months ago, uh, we were asked to sign on to an M O U with Nextdoor. Um, in case they received a grant, and we researched news that they have received that grant to do Hood River one oh one in Spanish, so. Uh, Jackie's gonna be working with them and uh, putting that together, we're really excited, I think that'll happen next spring. The shelter will be closing on March thirty-first, um, I think currently there's probably about twenty, twenty-five people staying there, so. Um, you know, we don't have a, an year-round shelter, so this has an impact on our community, and of course, the members who have been staying there. Um, and then finally, uh, planning and work is being done, um, to get started on the Montello project, that is, um. You know, replacement of, I think, water and um, sewer, um, and then repaving, um, from second to sixth. Um, and so staff, I think Jackie and Randy were out, um, hanging door hangers and talking to residents and and really starting that communication process, so. Um, I think we learned a lot from our prospect experience last year, and we're uh, determined to. Do as good and better a job specifically uh, around communication, so.
So there's no sixth on the prospect, I'm not telling, is it to seven or?
I wrote, I wrote down second to sixth.
The project, I believe, actually starts midway, some of those, uh. Corner houses are actually tapped into a different water line, so, but I think there will be some. My understanding, there may be, there may be multiple way out to seventh, but the actual water. Does actually align with six, even though there is no.
Six, where six would be.
Yes, imaginary six.
Thank you, Jess.
Yes, excellent, those are my comments, thank you.
You have a question.
Go ahead, Mark. Um. Updates on the two intersections, are we on for May still?
I think we're still on track, I think the second in Oak is going uh, smoothly, and Cascade and Rand. Um, work is, you know, back on track, so. Fingers crossed.
Well, we have a traffic light at. Uh, Uncle Bang, Rand, and Cascade five, and by May also, is that the plan?
Gosh, don't quote me, but yes, that's the plan.
That's the plan, okay. We can have.
Say that on record.
We can have an office, no, like, on March, which is gonna be soon.
Oh, that would be fun, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Abigail, that's all, any, any more comments or questions for Abigail's city manager comments, thank you.
Uh, committee reports, let's start with Grant.
Uh, no committees yet, uh, Region One Act has meets on April Fool's Day, so, week from today.
Uh, no, the McCack Board meets tomorrow, so no update.
Thank you, Mark.
None.
Uh, I'll do mine here for committee, uh, the United Way Allocations Committee has met and decided which agencies will receive funding. For the upcoming year, last year we gave away four hundred thousand dollars, our biggest year ever, so hopefully we will. Continue to uh, have good partnerships in the community, raise a bunch of money, so we can give a bunch of money away. Megan.
Um, Sister City, we had um, our middle school guests from Saruda out. Last week, about two weeks ago, um, thank you to Paul for his wonderful banjo playing and welcome, um, to those folks, and. Uh, I don't think any of them are here, but thanks to the host families and other supporters that helped make that, uh, this was the first visit since COVID, and it sounds like it was a good success. Um, so that was good news, and then we had a board meeting last week, um, kind of starting to look at. Well, wrapping up some stuff from that visit, and then looking at it, sounds like there will be some high schoolers from our city going out to Saruda in, I think, August. Um, I don't have a lot of details on that yet, but um, but so things are restarting, which is very exciting.
Yeah, your work on that.
Doug.
Uh, none to report.
Okay, so that's committees, let's start with Doug on council comments.
Uh, I just want to thank everybody, um, for contributing to the uh, conversation we had. On, on the ceasefire resolution, I want to acknowledge that, um. All, e- everyone that's up here, um, has individual opinions, um, that, uh. That go beyond what we, what we are deciding in terms of a resolution versus a statement, et cetera, and I know it's. Was very hard for all of you to articulate that, and I appreciate your candor and. And working on that, uh, and also appreciate everybody that that came to speak, um. I think the more public participation that we have here, the better, uh, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor, we can't meet. Uh, outside of this chamber, we can have uh, limited discussions where we don't have a quorum, but, um, thi- this is an important. Place to come voice your opinions and, um. Don't be afraid to do that, and I I thank everybody that came here to to voice their concerns, their opinions, et cetera, about, um. The, the ceasefire and and anything else, so, um, that's all I have to say.
Well said, thank you, Doug.
Well, thank you, Doug, that's, um, said it better than me, but I certainly agree with everything, um, very difficult topic and. No, no good answer to it, um. But thank you all in the community for participating, um. Outside of that, I attended the county meeting last week, um, as, as my fun meeting. Um, and, uh, relevant things for us, um, really not much, but the, there's the Powerdale Corridor. Which is the Columbia Land Trust, and then a couple small bits that are owned by the county. Um, and they had a very long and very wide-ranging conversation, um, about that and and long-term, kind of current and long-term management of it. Um, the end of which was, and Abigail can correct me if I get this kind of wrong, but the county. Uh, not that it's actually past this, but they decided to move forward with making it an official county park, so that they could actually create rules for said park and enforce them. Um, so things like day use only, um, you know, no fires and and et cetera, um. And trying to figure out some of the kind of long-term cleanup stuff there as well.
Thanks, Megan, for your participation there, I actually took a little field trip down there, having heard about some of the activity. And uh, took a video and texted it to my daughter in Seattle, and was like, Rosie, is this, when you're going to the trestle, like, where is that? Oh, yeah, that building over there, so. That, that's an area that has a ton of casual use, there were people walking their dogs, and the, the multi-user aspect of that is truly fascinating. Considering it's, it's not like actually a county park with like. Hardly any rules, like, it's, a lot of people spend time there, so this is uh, sort of an intensification question and a user. Collaboration conflict question, it'll be really interesting to see how that moves ahead. Uh, Mark, council comments?
Uh, I will miss the next four meetings, I will zoom in on the one, the second meeting in April. Um, and I'll figure out something with snacks for Budget Committee, but uh, other than that. Um, I trust that you all have fun, so.
Have a great trip.
And I, I think Doug summarized the Gaza thing nicely, so.
Gladys.
Thank you, yeah, I agree with my peers on the ceasefire in Gaza, appreciate everyone uh, coming today and. Continuing to, again, hold us accountable, uh, hard, hard topic to talk about. Uh, wanna congratulate the Nextdoor on that grant for the Hood River one oh one classes in Espanol, that will be incredible. Uh, I also want to announce that on April twenty-seventh, from ten to two P M is Dia de El Niño. Uh, in Mexico, we celebrate Mother's Day, Father's Day, and we celebrate Dia de El Niño, so Day of the, of the Kid. That will take place at One Community Health in Hood River, last year's event brought over a thousand families, so if you have an opportunity to attend. Please do so, uh, uh, April twenty-seventh from ten to two P M, that's a Saturday at One Community Health in Hood River. Um, also, let me pull up my, or pull up my picture so I can get this right, on April fourth, um. From six to seven at the Hood River Auditorium, the Hood River County School Board. Is hosting interviews for a brand-new candidate for uh, Superintendent. Bill Newton and Megan Dawson, so if you have an opportunity there, each candidate is gonna have approximately thirty minutes to address the audience. And answer any questions in this forum, so this is being hosted by the Hood River County School Board of Directors. Uh, it is also Farm Worker Appreciation Week, uh, a, starting today until the thirty-first. If you have an opportunity or any extra new long-sleeve shirts, you can drop them off at One Community Health in Hood River or the Dal's. And this is, well, these shirts will go to local farm workers within our community that work really hard to make sure that we have food on our table.
Thank you, Gladys, Grant.
Couple of bridge-related things, since I was at that commission meeting earlier, on Wednesday at five o'clock, there is a Bridge Aesthetics. Community Open House Zoom. Um, thing, so if you're interested in Bridge Aesthetics, that's a fun way to spend Wednesday night. Um, one other related thing for the future is, um, lo-. Long time ago, the bridge received money for a raise grant, uh, which has to do with multimodal transportation and connecting with the surrounding areas. So at some point, um, uh, we should expect to hear something. Um, regarding partnering with the Bridge Authority on. Planning of uh, multimodal transportation from the two endpoints of said bridge. That's it.
I have no mayor comments this evening, uh, that takes us to the executive session, I'm gonna read the script and.
Mayor, uh, real quick.
Oh, excuse me.
I, I forgot to mention, just, I, I hope that Councillor Coonahan feels better, uh, I know he really wanted to be here tonight, and Tim, we're thinking of you.
Yes, indeed, thanks, Doug, him, swift healing. Um, I'm gonna read the script, City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one ninety-two dot six sixty-one H. To consult with councils concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Also, O R S one ninety-two six sixty-one E, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real estate. Real property transactions, uh, representatives of the news media are allowed to attend, they are not in the room, but perhaps they are on Zoom. Uh, they're specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session. Uh, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced, no decision may be made, nor can action taken in the executive session. The executive session is ended within the last twenty-five minutes, at the end of the executive session, the city council meeting will be adjourned and no action will be taken. We will now discontinue.